Being 732. Phil, you ready? Being 732, I'm gonna open this meeting of the CPC. Remind everyone, this is, this meeting is being recorded. Danielle, what do we, what can we do right away? 197 Main?
Yes, why don't we start with 197 Main?
Alright. So I gather they're looking at... Doing what, 30? Is it 30 feet? 30 by something?
I was just actually... Anyone from 197 Main?
No, we're from...
You're too... Do you read? Okay. Um, okay, so I'll explain what they're going to be... What they're asking for from 197 Main Street. Um, in... Oh, now, actually, sorry, just wanna make sure that... Somebody's trying to... Oh, people in the waiting room. Alright, so one of the people coming into the meeting right now is, um, here from 197 Main Street. I did just wanna explain, the building inspector gave me a little bit of background on this. Um, this is for, uh, there is going to be an application to the zoning board appeals to request, you know, special use permit for landscaping. Um, the building inspector asked that it come here first because there's outdoor storage involved, and wanted to see if the CPC would modify the site plan first to see if the outdoor storage could be permitted in that way before it moved onto the ZBA. So, um, the owner of the property is on the line. So I'm just... Make sure you can hear and see everyone.
Is it Rusty?
Yes.
That's all, huh?
Yeah.
I'm just not sure why I can't... You...
No last tree.
Okay. They're on.
It's probably there, right?
Can the people at home hear me?
Danielle, they're muted up there.
No, 'cause they're not muted on that one. Can the people at home hear me? Can the people at home hear me? Can the people at home?
I can hear you.
Anywhere.
I can hear you.
You gotta mute that one. Okay.
Can you still hear us at home? I'm muted. Hold on.
We always have this issue.
Okay. Can, can you hear me at home? What should I do around here? Um... I, if I'm not muted, it echoes. If I am muted, they can't hear me. Or I can't hear them. And I don't know why I can't hear them. Um...
So I know... Oh. Room 14 is muted. See that?
Yes, that, that's the phone.
That's, so that's you. That's the computer.
That's my computer or is that the phone? I think room 14 is the phone. No, that's that computer. That one should be muted.
Over there?
'Cause that's just for the video.
Oh, it's not...
How do I unmute on the segment somewhere?
The Realtek audio is at zero, I think.
What is it?
This one here?
I just put that down because it... Alright, someone say something.
Rusty, say something. I can hear noise. See, I think... You need to be muted.
Do I need to be unmuted?
No, you need to be muted.
Okay.
But you can unmute Trina.
I don't know if I need to unmute Trina. I need to... Rusty's not muted.
I heard some, I heard somebody.
Yeah, so I can hear them, but I don't...
Maybe that's why she was muted. Can you see them?
I can see them on. Okay, they're both muted now. Um... Okay. Can I... Rusty, can you hear me? Do I need to unmute when I can hear here? I'm having a little echo right now.
Sure. Let me mute that and see what happens.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Nope. Now they can hear you.
The caller needs to...
Mute that one.
Do you ever get a call? How do you mute a call on September 11th?
I don't know.
Star something.
Oh, um... We are in technical difficulties. But we can see him though, too. We're having technical difficulties, you can hear me, Rusty.
Chris, you can hear him, right? You can hear him.
I think we can hear him now.
Can he still hear us? No. This has to be... Rusty, can you hear us?
He's away from his phone now.
He's away from his phone.
Try Trina.
Trina, oh, she's muted. I'm just wondering if it's getting from here.
Yeah, those are the microphones for...
For us, so this is supposed to be muted?
Yes.
Because it's, I have to, I can only hear from that phone, right? This is how anyone at home is hearing you on here?
Correct. Well, um, how anyone at home is hearing it through Northam, the microphone's up to the left, so yeah. But how people zoom into it, that's all they hear through the room, yeah.
So this should be muted?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright. Rusty, are you able to hear us?
I don't think so. 'Cause he just walked away.
You can also chat. You can also be a chat at that point.
He's back. Chat with him now. He's looking at his computer.
Is there, is the volume turned down on this?
It might be.
Because it should be. Rusty, can you hear us?
Nope.
Yeah, so the phone is muted.
The phone is muted?
Yes, yeah. Is that who, who, no, that's a guest.
The room 14?
Room 14, yeah.
But that's that. That one is...
Oh, so the second...
Which I think doesn't matter, this one's... I think it's...
Yeah, that's, that's... That's that. Yeah, that was that one.
This is muted.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
Star six.
You are unmuted.
Rusty, can you hear us?
Can, can you hear us now, Rusty?
Yes. Thank you. We're, we're in technical difficulties.
Sorry about that, okay. Here we are. Um, so Rusty, the CPC members have your plans that you submitted to show the outdoor storage area. I was just giving them a little introduction. Do you wanna talk a little bit about what you'd like to do?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay. So basically, um, if you look at that plan...
Uh, you were echoing for a minute, but go ahead.
Yes, it was echoing.
Can you hear us still? Can you hear us?
No, he can hear us, but we can't hear him.
I can hear him, he's just really low. I can hear him over here. Say that he can hear.
Is it the bees?
Oh, sorry.
Is someone coming closer? And it shouldn't be?
I didn't mean to lock the door, it's alright. See if you can drive that up. The other way.
I was wondering if this needs to be muted in that turn way up?
Oh yeah, the lap, your laptop? Probably.
Okay. Alright, I'm muting my laptop when it turns that way up. Okay, Rusty, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Alright.
Good.
We just have a, we have a little lag, that's all.
Yes.
Alright, awesome. I can't really see the board was up there, but I'm gonna take it, one of my plans. There was two plans that we put together for me. One of them was, um, an overview of the whole, of the entire property site plan. And the other one was kind of a little area that I'm looking for the special permit for. So one of my tenants, Mosher Enhancement, a landscaping company, um, wanted to do some outdoor storage. And it's right adjacent to the dumpster. Um, and you can see, I sent them pictures, and you can see we moved to it out there. Um, and that's really about it. They have a truck, a trailer, and some cows that rest over acres and stuff from other projects. Um, and that's, that's really about it. Um, there's a natural buffer between the, and the house that Chris built. I'm not sure what they're, um, who owns it right now, but they work, they do it from across the hill time. They're big guys and stuff like that. Um, but it's got a, a really... Basically, I don't know if you have the pictures behind the wall there, but it's a very high natural buffer. Um, made up of evergreens and trees and... And I went here the other day and I measured from the property line, which is up at the top of the hill. And then there's a steep decline. The, the natural buffer's fallen within there. I, I couldn't even see my, my property almost from when I was standing on the property line, looking down. Um, and, uh, it's 25 feet to the front of the natural buffer. And then from there, it gives whatever that distance is worth to, to where we're looking to get a special permit for storage. And that's it.
So Rusty, that area, this is Chris Hayden. That area is 30 feet deep? How wide is that? Do you know? I'm looking at his red tri, his red rectangle here. Like...
Yes, it's, it's, um, within 30 feet of the residential A. It goes into residential A no more than 30 feet.
Okay. Anybody have a question? Warren?
I couldn't hear you.
There's no questions, wait.
Uh, yeah, this is Jeremiah. In the, in the picture that we're looking at, so, uh, where the dumpsters are, and then there's the truck behind it. So that's essentially the spot that you're talking about, right? Where the trucks are.
Yes, you got it. You got it, yes.
Okay.
My concern, looking at the picture with the, the truck trailer and then the material that's stored there, is, you know, this is kind of behind everything. And, um, you know, just worried about the security for that stuff. You know, the people probably can't see it because, I mean, during the summertime, there's plenty of buffer. I don't know what the wintertime buffer is. Or is there a, is there a six-foot fence around the property? Or just partially around it?
Yes, it's, um... Yes, the entire property is, is covered with a fence, except for where the natural buffer zone is. That's, I don't have a fence at the top of that hill.
Right.
But there is a fence around the entire property, all the way to the front, to Main Street.
Okay.
So, Hatcher's building there.
You know, I don't, I don't know what the other people's thought is, but, um, just worried about someone backing up a vehicle to that area and putting those pots and things right near cars because they're, they're very visible if you're in that back parking lot. If, I don't know if you follow what I mean?
Um, so you're worried about people stealing the stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, with, with Trina, if she wants to put a fence there or whatever she could, but I don't think it's really of anything that, of any, any, yeah, I don't know. I'd need to ask Trina to, to say. But, um, I mean, I, uh, I have my, uh, I have a wood splitter back there, gas powered. They never really had any issues. I got surveillance cameras all over the building. Um, and, uh, I have some trucks there, but I let the guys take them home most of the time.
Okay.
I mean, if she, if she was concerned about, um, it being stormed, then I would say she would have to put a fence up or something and lock it. But, Trina, what's your feeling on that?
Um, with all the security, I'm not really concerned about it. I'm prepared to, with, with their, uh, I, I don't see an issue. Security.
Okay. Um, there's another thing that I wanted to let you guys know is, um, Greg got a call. The town actually got a call that there was, uh, some noise going on there. Um, and that's what brought, uh, Greg there. Jerry, Jerry, Jerry there to, um...
Jerry Noel.
...go on, that's when he saw Mosher Enhancement's truck there. I didn't realize that we needed a special permit because I thought that as long as she was tenant in the building, um, we could do outdoor storage, but, um, and then she filed with the town, her paperwork to do business within the town, and then we're going through this process now. But I did go into my surveillance cameras and I found out that the entry of the dumpster was getting dumped at 4:37 a.m. And I sent that to Jerry. Um, so, um, he immediately went there and, um, Yanni immediately called the dumpster people. It's eight o'clock now.
Okay.
Eight to nine, uh, Monday morning. It was every Monday that we were doing that. So, that, that put a halt to that pretty quick.
Well, that's good because seven o'clock is like the time we, we kind of tell everybody that they should be, you know, no earlier than seven for dumping dumpsters. As a matter of fact, if you went over to the, uh...
Yeah.
To the CVS, and you drove between the CVS and the, the little strip mall there, they've got big signs that say, "No dumpster picking between such and such a time", and that's for the drivers to see. So they know, they know there's an ordinance in town for, for noise. So... Well, it's good that you took care of that. Is there anything else?
Yes.
Jeremiah?
Immediately.
I mean, my thought being that, I mean, this seems like an attempt to kind of clean up the space and keep it organized and look better than the...
As long as they keep it within that area, and that's, that's one thing for the fences. You know where things are. If you had some, something there to, at least so they knew where to be.
And I think that in the, you know, as you said earlier, I mean, we're looking at summertime foliage here. So in the wintertime, that might not be as much a buffer than we think, but...
I'd be really concerned, though, there are some, there are evergreen trees.
But if it is less of a buffer, even in the wintertime, more incentive to have it be an organized space.
Yeah, I would agree.
Warren, you have any questions?
No, just the, the area looks a little small for all of the... It's, so the storage is gonna stay inside that box?
That's what it looks like here.
Yes.
But if you read all the things that go in there and, you know... We consider that a, given a small dump truck's good eight feet wide, you know, how many, how much stuff can you get into that area and still access it?
Right.
It's not a lot, it's not a lot of space there.
They got two trailers there now, and a dump truck, and a couple pallets of stuff.
In that, in that boxed-in area?
I don't know if it's in that, the, the red air, the red boxed-in area. I don't know if it's within that area, that's the...
Well, that's why the, I think the question about a fence came up, is because a fence would define that area.
Right, where they, what should be.
Whether they park the trucks and the trailers anyplace else, you know, they're not really an issue, but...
Right.
Storage of materials could, uh, could spread out rather quickly from a small area to encompass a large area.
I mean, the truck could actually be parked on the asphalt.
Yeah.
Back there. That, that would be, because this isn't a use...
So at least a couple of sides, fence to a couple of sides would give it, you know, some, would define the area.
A, a three-sided fence with nothing, no gates in it.
Would define the area, you know, and I, I think that's probably...
Did you say what we're talking about, Rusty?
Yeah, sure. So what I'll do is, um, I can have a, 'cause that's a steep hill, um, going up at the back of that.
Yeah.
Um, I can have a fence go from like, like you said, 30 feet out, straight out to the end. And this, like you said, defines the area. And, um, it'll be, and then we know that, 'cause you know what happens when it just starts creeping out, the storage. And, yeah, I have no problem with that, I can have a fence put up there.
Yeah, just, it, it defines where they can store stuff.
Yeah.
And it keeps it confined to that area. So if someone, the neighbor complains, "Hey, there's stuff all over the place", and the building inspector goes over there, but all the stuff is within that area, then you're okay.
You got it.
And he has some, he has a light to stand on. It helps him out, it helps us out. Danielle, did you have any comments?
I can do that.
No, my only comment, just, um, you know, if, if the site plan review is, you know, granted in terms of the minor modification, they still do need the special use permit for landscaping from the ZBA, so that would be, you know, I would probably note that in any...
Okay. But yeah, this gives them the minor modification to the site plan, but they still have to get a special permit because that's not an allowed use within...
It's a special permit use.
Yeah, it's a special permit use. Okay. Alright, so... Are there any other questions? Warren?
No.
Jeremiah?
Alright. Read the motion.
Please.
I move that the community planning commission vote to grant the requested minor modification and improve the plans entitled, "As Bill Plan 197 Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts. Assessor's map 26, parcels 20, dated October 11, 2010, drawn by O'Neill Associates and all subsequent approvals."
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Three in favor and... David and...
Warren?
Jeremiah.
No, Jeremiah is here. We have two absentees tonight.
Oh, I thought you counted the people that weren't here.
No, no, no. David's not here.
Yeah, David's not here.
So, so that's, so now you've gotta go for your special permit for use. Rusty, that would be you, that would be Trina, I guess. With the ZBA. Okay? But you're... It, it's better that this is done before you see them. Alright?
Thank you.
Alright, so...
Alright.
Was that Trina wanted to say something? Did you wanna say something, Trina?
I'm sorry, it's cutting out.
Everything here. She's cutting out, she's gonna...
Oh, she's cutting off, okay.
I didn't get you, but probably...
I still didn't understand her. Can you understand her, Danielle? Oh, okay. Alright, well... She can call and talk to you tomorrow, if she needs to?
Yeah, unless you'd like to put something in the chat.
Okay. So Trina, if you could, if you wanna, if you have a question that we could answer tonight, you could chat it to Danielle, 'cause we're, you're cutting out on this, we're only catching part of what you're saying. 'Cause you're the only one on. I mean, I'm not on the, the call. Then we'll move on to the next one.
Yeah, Katrina, you're cutting in and out, so I can give you Danielle's number, and you can just call her if you had a question.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Alright. Alright. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rusty.
Thank you.
You have a good day.
Thank you, Danielle. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
One, one words work fine. Her single words, we could understand them. Alright, so... We're gonna go to, um... 250 April Street? Is there anybody out there waiting for this?
I can see anyone in the waiting room.
I think there's no one there.
Nope, it's just me and the rest of room 14.
Okay.
They should get through it, right?
Yeah, yeah, finally. Sorry for the...
Sorry.
The wait. You folks are here for it?
250.
250?
250 and 250, we are.
Okay. So, we're up to that right now. You could, you could sit right up at the, the table there, if you'd like.
Couple of years ago, we, uh...
Oh, it's your name?
Dave Estes.
How do you spell your last name?
How do you, how do you spell your last name for?
E S T E S.
I'm sorry, E S T E?
E S T E S.
Just gotta get that right in a minutes.
Oh, yeah. So a couple of years ago, we, uh, we approached the board for, to, uh, make 250 and 250 red private way. And at the time, it was a couple of years ago, there were a couple of members of the board that felt that we didn't have a wide enough driveway, which was, I think, 16 feet or so. We had some issues with, um, some wetland issues that we've resolved since then. We've also increased the driveway.
I've noticed that.
The other, yeah, it's great. So much better. The other concern was having two 10-foot driveways for each, for Barbara and myself.
Okay. Right.
As you come up, odds on the left, come up the right. So we're back here again, hoping to get the private way, essentially. That's why I'm with you.
So Danielle, I know you wrote a memo on this.
Yeah, um, just, I, I hope that the assessor, um, if, if you do want to, you know, create this as a, a new private way with a name that she would be able to give an address to, it would need to be shown as its whole parcel and be really clear about how it was deeded, like 50% to each property. I think doing it as an easement like this wouldn't necessarily be enough for her to give it a street address.
A street address? So they need to do some, they need to do more?
I, I think so. I didn't want to, to go making changes to the plan until we knew, you know, whether this is something would be a minor support.
Right, right, right. So we're just, we're just here to, to listen to this and see what we're thinking.
I mean, essentially, last time it was pretty much no. Now we're at this plate.
Well, you, now you've done some, you've done some work on the ground...
Exactly.
To make it wider. You got a 10-foot right, you got 10-foot on either side of the road. And there's no divider in that driveway, correct?
No.
So it's just, it's just deeding the right side to...
Essentially eight inches.
Yeah.
Or 20 feet, eight inches.
I, I saw that. I know, I saw that in the plan.
Jeremiah, did you see the driveway at all? I showed you a couple of...
Uh, I've just seen what we've got in the, in the meeting materials, but...
Just watch the wires out there, there's lots of them these days.
So this is the before, this is the after.
Okay. So R is on the left? 250 R, correct?
Right.
On the right side?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And, alright. And you wanna rename that, bring that into a, a private way?
Correct.
Okay. We have to...
Go ahead, just...
You have, um, you have enough room there to create it as a separate parcel, right? I mean, you have enough square footage in that lot, in those two lots?
What is it?
How, how many, how many square footage is in each one of the two lots? How, how, how much square footage is in each one of the two lots?
Uh, two-point-seven-five acres.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So there's tons of room. So essentially, if you're gonna do it, um, probably, correct me if I'm wrong, Danielle, you just gotta bring a plan and show on it, but I would, just gotta show some kind of turnaround at the end, too. So that, um, um, cause we have a couple, like there's one off of Linwood that's got, probably the smallest cul-de-sac I've ever seen, and yet it's a private way, and that's, you know, how it is.
Well, we do have a turnaround.
Yeah. So as long as you had, of, of the plan shows, an acceptable, a turnaround that, for example, a fire truck could turn around in, and, um, enough width and everything, I suppose if you submitted a plan, I would...
Yeah, I mean, we've had, unfortunately for me, I've had several fire trucks and PMS folks up to my house.
And they get in and out without a problem, so...
Absolutely, yes.
So, yeah, so I would say...
I have, my, my brother's disabled also, as I mentioned, I, I can't, you know...
See, you're not playing games, you gotta make, you gotta access.
My wife had some mental issues, unfortunately, she's fine now, but I must've had North Reading Fire Department up there several times.
Yeah, you do have, there is a turnaround, you can see it on the subject plan, Warren, if you look at the subject plan.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, is basically, as long as you have those basic items and everything, I don't see any reason why you couldn't, uh, make it a private way.
And I think what Danielle is saying, you, you just gotta make it a...
It has to be its own parcels, so that...
Yeah, you gotta make their own parcels out of it, and then you could give easements, like for the circle, you're gonna cut the circle in half, but you want everybody to be able to use that that comes up there. So you gotta give your, you know, the, the neighbor the easement to allow them to, to turn around there, and things like that.
Yeah, it's a little bit of an unusual situation in a way, but, but I don't, but, um, I...
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Me either. I mean, I think that it's, you know, it really doesn't really matter.
What's that, far as the service journey?
It, it, it's just some paperwork, you know?
Yeah, just have some...
If you don't have, if you don't have trouble with it now, you wouldn't have trouble with it later. It's just so everybody can cross and recross.
Yeah.
The fire department doesn't matter, cause they're gonna cross on it anywhere.
Exactly.
They, they, they don't, they don't worry about those things. If you get a, a paved area, they're gonna drive on it, cause they have to.
Right.
Their emergency. They, they get to go by all those rules.
You know, that's something Luke Lloyd, we, we use Luke Lloyd, so he'll, he can help us.
He could help you with that.
Yeah, so if you draw, draw the plan, show the, show the, um, show it, and then, um, both of you would have rights to it, so that's gonna have to be in the, in the, in the paperwork, showing that both of you have rights to this, this piece of, which is now an independent piece of land, but you both have right-of-ways on it, rights on it, so, and I, I think that's the one off of Linwood, I can't remember the name of the street right off, but that's the way they did. Know which one I mean?
I do.
Right, right now, we, we have an easement to go up the driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm just thinking how far up that goes at this point.
Well, you, when, when you, uh, when you make it a separate piece of land, it's a whole new deed, it's a whole new situation. So it becomes a separate piece of land with you two having the rights to it, rights to pass and repass and so forth. And, and, you know, who's your, who's your future engineer?
Luke Lloyd.
Pardon? Luke, okay, yeah, so Luke knows, he knows what to do.
He, he knows what to do with it.
Draw it up, and then there's a little bit of legal paperwork, and you'll be good.
And this is a, I think this is one chance that you guys get to name the road, but...
Well, it's a private road, because of the one off of Linwood, which is my example, they chose their name for that road, so...
Right, right. But you gotta run that by the fire department and the police department to make sure they have no...
I can do, too.
You can do that for them.
Yeah, if you have a name that you want, not as make sure they're okay with, you know...
Yeah, I think you did already, but the last time, we didn't really name, uh...
Do you, do you remember what that name was?
It was Penny Lane.
It was Penny Lane, all right. I will run them by them again, P-E-N-N-Y.
Yeah.
I'll just, um...
Yeah, just make sure it works in town.
Yeah, just to be sure there hasn't been some others being used in the last couple of years, but confusing and what's out somewhere.
Don't, I don't recall any, but you never know. And you'd be surprised, you get terrorists, all the same names in these other towns. I don't know how the, I have trouble getting to those houses, because, oh my God, they're, all the names are the same.
Yeah.
I don't know how the fire department and police department get there, but they seem to in other towns, but just make it easier for them here. Especially if you have a, you know, you're kind of a frequent flyer for them coming up there. They'll know where you are anyways.
Yeah, they'll, yeah.
They'll probably, they'll probably continue to use your old address.
Exactly. Now they can see that they own it, after you...
Yeah, it's a ni, it's a ni, it's a nice improvement that you did there. Nice improvement.
Okay.
I mean, the other nice thing is that, is that I struggle a lot with the mail, you know, two-fifty rear thing.
I grew up at two-fourteen rear Highland Road. My grandparents lived in a front house at two-fourteen, so I understand.
You know, I get certain people's mail all the time.
Yes, it's a real pain, isn't it? You gotta put it in the other box?
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, I mean, yeah, it is.
This'll take care of that. Get your own address.
Okay.
All right, so you've got your, your...
Yeah, I think...
Talk with Danielle, would you, would you...
I'm gonna ask her to help with this, cause he's...
Yeah, I'm sure Luke, just tell, send Luke her, right? And, and they'll get it figured out, do all the paperwork, and then you come back to us. All right?
Yep.
Glad I didn't have to do that on Zoom.
It's much better.
It's, it's, it is easy to do.
She warned me, she better not have to come in.
Yeah.
You're welcome, take care, have a nice night. All right, what else you got, Danielle?
Um, just in terms of if you wanna make a recommendation on the town meeting warrant article, um, if you don't wanna make a recommendation now, that's fine, but if you do, and you wanna print it in the warrant, um, I'll let Karen know. And that would be for the, um, uh, funding for wetlands delineation.
Right. I think the other night when they were, when Leanne brought it up, I thought we, everybody was here, Warren was not, but we kind of all agreed that we, that was an okay thing.
I think that's when I was on the Zoom end of it, but yeah.
Oh, you were on the Zoom, that's right.
So I, you know...
I mean...
Do you see what that is, Warren? It's those pieces of property that...
Yep.
They wanna, they wanna spend money on getting the engineering and the, uh, where the wetlands are flagged, so we know what's exactly on the ground there.
The, the concern about the Habitat for Humanity, right?
Yeah. About them and anybody else that...
Anybody.
Anybody that we, we transfer that property to, to do that same thing with.
I don't know, I...
Pardon?
I, I think they're okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think anything that separates the clarity...
Yes.
To resolve those issues is, I mean, it's a minor investment in that regard.
So, I'm, I'm off, you know? That, that's, you know, it's out of our hands anyways, it's, it's really, uh, it's really the select board's call on this. But yeah, I mean, I'll support them on this, cause it's gonna... The, the, the react, the, the answers that come back on this don't negate it from being an affordable housing lot overlay. It just lets, anybody that's...
If they do this, will they then, if they do this, will they then try to sell it? As opposed to leaving it in the overlay district?
No, I think it's gonna, it's, they're not, it's not to try to take these parcels out of the overlay district.
No.
It's just try to, making sure anybody that comes in gets that information upfront. And it's not gonna, it's gonna be done once, and it's not gonna be updated. But if someone came in, say Habitat for Humanities came in and they wanted the, the parcel on St. Teresa Street, right?
Yep.
They can get this report, and they have that in hand.
It's something, just for the record, it's something they would have to do, even if they started out with that way.
Exactly.
So there's really, you know, it's like, what's the...
I know.
It's a little bit of a cock before the horse.
Yeah, it's, I think it's for the select board, their knowledge.
Yeah.
And it makes them feel more comfortable.
There was clearly a very voiced concern on this topic.
Right.
And it makes sense that everybody does their due diligence to make sure that there's concerns.
That's why I support this, you know?
And we'd like to all be on the same page, and this is really just clarifying what it is and how it can be used.
Right.
Yep.
So, shall we support this?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, if it get, it moves us in the right direction, so why not?
So why don't we do that, Danielle? Do we have to make a vote?
I think maybe I'll make a motion on the fly for you, then, if you wanna move to, um...
Jeremiah can pull it.
Uh, yeah, okay, then, uh, move to support, uh, the warrant article, oh, I don't know what article it is yet, do I?
Article fourteen.
Article fourteen, um, to, uh, support wetlands delineation and engineering work. For the affordable housing overlay district properties in town meeting.
So, so moved.
So moved. Yeah, yeah, second, yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so we support it. So it'll go, Debbie knows the code.
You're also the co-host, so, yeah.
Right.
But no, you support it too, so, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's great.
That's ZBA for twenty-five Maple Street? What is, what is that, uh, other than Mr. Smith and...
The, it hasn't come in yet to us, but Maple, Maple Road is, um, unacceptable, so, um, this is a property that would need to go through the unacceptable ways by law, um, for adequacy of access. Um, this is very similar to twenty Maple, which we did a few years ago. Um, so, as it stands right now, um, I, from my understanding, Mr. Smith has made an application for a building permit that's been denied because he has not gone through the, um, the process for determination of access yet.
Okay.
So the building inspector will not issue the permit, so that's what he's appealing that decision to, is okay. So, um, I know the separate lot exemption is mentioned there, this is a lot that's large enough and would have enough rentage to be conforming, so, um, any status as a pre-existing non-conforming lot, I mean, I don't really think that's in dispute at all, it's just the adequacy of access question. And this is another lot that was shown on the old, um, say, the same subdivision plan as the other, the Parkside Little.
Right.
So we do have a plan on record that shows a twelve-foot wide right-of-way subdivision way, um, so I, you know, um, that's, that's really the background on this.
Good. It's real hard to pass two cars on a twelve-foot wide road. That's okay.
You know, safety is the issue here.
Yeah?
And safety seems to be kicked aside.
That's right.
When we run into these and...
Nothing's happened down there yet. When something happens down there,
Yeah.
the people down there are gonna start screaming.
Yeah.
So whoever makes it to you, you can ask for roadway improvements, but it hasn't made it to you yet, so...
Right.
Yeah.
All right. I just, it was there, I just, and, and all that was in there was that, that date. Have we got a meet before that?
Um, there were, that's September fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
No, we'll be...
See, that's the problem. The, well, we can't have, we can't look at the real thing.
That's it.
That's it. That's all there is to it, okay.
I mean, there's probably a violation, or not a violation, no, there was probably a, um, denial letter.
Okay.
But I, we didn't try to copy that.
All right.
So that's it, so I don't know if you have any feedback on this, but, um...
Yeah, safe and adequate. It's a, it's an old subdivision right-of-way, so what do you do?
Well, you could ask for payment, you could ask for water, and, you know...
That's not, didn't they, I...
Can't make it wider, though.
I think the right, the right-of-ways in a lot of those old, um, areas were all twenty feet, but, um, these only shows twelve back there. I, I remember we, we had a long discussion about that.
Yeah, this one only shows twelve, I remember that.
And apparently, legally, it, it qualifies, I mean, you know, because it was an existing subdivision, so...
Right, but you can still ask for the road to be...
Well, we, we have no, we really, we have to.
Yeah.
Whether we get it or not, I don't know.
He's put water already up to twenty-eight, right?
Up to, uh, not up to...
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Did we get twenty-one out of that one? I don't know, we got twenty-one.
Was that an eight-inch main or was that copper? Did you just...
I think it was an eight-inch main up to twenty, I think, but I, I have to...
Cause, you know, that's, that's what we'd be looking for, is, is water and improve the roadway, as much as we can by law.
Do you want me to give that feedback, that if it were to come for a determination of access, you ask for those things?
Yeah.
So you support the building inspector?
Isn't, if, so the building inspector has not issued the building permit because it needs a determination of access?
Oh, absolutely.
Impossible roadway improvement, so would you?
Yes, we support the building. I, I, I shouldn't say that, I was talking for the board. Jeremiah says yes, and you support...
What?
The building inspector.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He's just trying to do the right thing.
He is, he is. He's, he is doing the right thing.
Yeah, I remember looking at a house up there in the middle of winter, and, oh.
Not fun, huh?
Not fun, not fun. So at least a roadway improvement, for sure.
Okay.
It's one thing if there's not, if there's like one or two houses, but they keep building houses...
They keep building more houses, it's gonna be more traffic than that one.
Especially if they keep building big houses, and then, and then, what, it used to be a small house with a single car, now it's three cars out in front of it.
Yeah.
That, all those three cars gotta get in and out, and that's, you know, on a twelve-foot wide road, it's...
And nine times out of ten, those three cars leave that property every day.
Yeah.
At least once. At least once. It's one thing if you, if it's, two people that live in a house and they own three cars. So, all right, anything else, Danielle?
No, I think the other discussions we have...
Yeah, we should wait on those other discussions till we have a full, a full board. We're not being pushed by anybody on those, so, um, we, we just have to go through that discussion all over again if we do.
I know, it's best to...
So it's best to do it all at once. All right, when's our next, uh...
So, September sixth is primary election, so...
Two weeks after that, right?
Twenty, yes, will be our next, right, twenty?
The thirtieth?
The twentieth.
No, I'm sorry, wrong date, the twentieth, okay. Anybody have anything?
Uh, I do have some, uh, news to help, uh, forecast my availability. My wife is pregnant with our second, uh...
Uh-oh.
In the beginning of November.
Oh, wow.
And right now, it's pretty much, you know, you know, any day, you know, kinda stuff, so it might be earlier than expected.
So we should probably, uh, do, um, the same thing we did tonight.
Hybrid?
A hybrid meeting.
Well, it, it...
Just so you could, you could...
It certainly helps.
Obviously, if, if it's active, we don't wanna hear from you. Just, well, let us know.
Yeah.
Let us know, but you don't have to be on the call that night. If you're covering and just watching the other one, you know?
Yeah, I would never, I would never really under that one if it happened.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So it should be an exciting fall.
Oh, God, it's hard, just like him, doesn't it? Yeah, well, that's all right. These, this too does happen.
Yeah.
As long as you can just let me know, if you can, if you know ahead of time.
Absolutely.
It helps, because that way I can harass somebody else.
Sure, sure.
In other words, she doesn't wanna harass you unless it's absolutely necessary, now that you've told us.
Yeah, cause we do have, um, the one fifty park, right?
That's coming soon, that's, yeah, one of my two parks, we're gonna need four, four people, at least.
Is that a special permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need four people for that.
Did we, did you, did we talk to Dave and Ryan tonight, or is this not available?
Uh, Ryan said that he had a...
He had a work dinner, I think, and Dave let me know he...
He was on vacation or something?
He had a concert.
Yeah. So, interesting, cause we thought they were gonna be here, right?
I, yeah, I know, they, yeah, but Dave's not in touch with me, but he's, um, the next day.
The next day and told us, yeah. I thought he was out of town, Dave was out of town. Then he might, I don't know.
I committed some kind of...
Some other commitment was there, yeah, that he had already committed to.
Is, is Labor Day Monday?
Yeah.
It's coming Monday, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that quick, isn't it?
Yeah, really.
September is like Thursday.
I, I had plans for the summer, too.
Yeah, what were those plans?
Another girl. She just moved into her new class of daycare today, and I spent about forty-five minutes in the lobby with her as she threw a fit, refusing to go into the new classroom.
Oh, no.
Uh, so she, well, the funny thing is, her birthday is November seventh, the due date for number two is November fifth. But the doctor's like, she's coming early, so just be prepared, she's coming early, so...
Second one, that's why.
Does, does she know about baby X?
Yeah, we took her to the ultrasound. Yeah, we took her through the ultrasound. Yeah, that was really fun. She was just kinda, what do you say?
Yeah, thank you.
It's the good stuff. Oh, yeah.